I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll go ahead and ask for approval of today's agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? The one item that we'll be not visiting would be the resolution. The proposal relinquish roadway easement and buy real property at the request of the county conservation board.
Okay.
So that would be the only change.
All right.
With that change, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, I have public comment. This is time for the public to comment on anything that's not on today's agenda.
Yes, Julie.
I have an issue.
Yes, ma'am.
Where someone left a phone message for you.
Yes.
Which you later said that you were going to give to department heads and law enforcement. Now, you pulled the same thing with me concerning the meeting. You remember what it was?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
You were going to... You know what? It's bullying, it's intimidation, and attempt to humiliate. So you need to stop doing that stuff. If you can't take an irate call from a citizen, then if you can't stand the heat, maybe you should step out of the kitchen. But no, attempts to humiliate and threaten are not acceptable. So please, let's not make that... Let's not have any more episodes of that.
Okay. I'm going to respond to Pauline. Pauline Lloyd called and left a very mad message. She acknowledged that. Her husband, who overheard her, acknowledged that. Ms. Lloyd apologized for her behavior, acknowledged it wasn't good. Her excuse was that she's had a medical issue that created her to be angry. So when the public, who have every right to voice their concern, call and are dissatisfied and accusatory of malicious intent...
Yes, absolutely.
Then I believe that the rest of our department heads need to know that there is a coordinated thought that we are doing something illegal, malicious to the public. Where you and I may disagree, anything you send in an email becomes public record. Anything you write to us in a letter is public record. Phone calls in our phone system become public record.
Are they all recorded?
Yes, they are.
I'm just curious.
Yes.
Okay, fine, go ahead.
Are they kept?
So...
They're not recorded?
No, they come to our...
They can be recorded.
They are sent and recorded in email fashion, in a WAV file.
Voice mail can be saved easily.
Correct.
Phone calls, no, are not recorded. Okay.
So when I have a constituent that believes that there is malicious or illegal activity going on, it has to be taken very seriously, Julie. Is there truly something illegal or malicious going on? And I believe that our department heads and elected officials need to know that there is this belief in the community.
My response to that is, you were... The Board of Supervisors earlier had issues where things, yes, were not being done right, exactly. So still intimidation and an effort to humiliate, you know what? You don't have to spread... You don't have to do that. Who else has ever done that? I don't know. But you need to stop because it is intimidation and it is humiliating. And the people of this county should not have to put up with you threatening to spread that stuff around. Was there anything threatening that you should say you're sending it to law enforcement? I'm sorry...
The sheriff is an elected official.
You need to stop. You need to stop acting that way because it doesn't look good for you and it doesn't reflect well on the other supervisors, unfortunately for them. But thank you for your comments.
All right, thank you.
But I'd like to say, I never made any threats to you guys at all. There was nothing threatening on that phone call at all to anyone. I will admit, I used an angry tone, but I did not make any threats at all. I asked some questions, but I did not make any threats.
I never said you made threats, Pauline.
But that's what you were talking about. If you're going to contact the county attorney on me and the sheriff's department...
The threat...
You just told everybody right here that I made threats and you were going to contact all the department heads.
Julie...
Excuse me, but everyone who comes to these meetings already know how we feel. You don't need to spread those... That message because they already know, as far as I know. Excuse me, I'm done.
Okay, thank you, Julie.
I'm done with that.
Pauline, it wasn't a threat that anything is going to happen. It's... Our department heads, including our elected officials, need to understand what the sentiment of the public is. Your husband... You acknowledged, your husband told you that your voicemail is inappropriate. You acknowledged it.
I did not say that.
You did too, because you said Kenny said it was inappropriate, the voicemail, and that your head injuries were likely to be the cause of what... Why that occurred.
I did not say my husband at all.
Yes, anyway...
Do we have that recorded?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
I said, when I get angry, I said, the anger part of me does come out and I need to stop and think because sometimes it's related to my head injuries, which that part is true, and I was angry that day. But I don't know. I guess I was just very upset with when you said you had to go to all head...
No.
...department heads because I didn't feel like I left anything that...
But when you openly acknowledge that you believe something illegal, unethical, or malicious is going on, all that happened was, we canceled a meeting last Friday, and you were upset because you had driven to town only to find that the meeting was canceled. That was the root of your complaint, and I acknowledged that the meeting had been canceled. Unfortunately, the auditor's office didn't communicate the cancellation. You acknowledged in our conversation, Pauline, that you didn't realize that I don't have any delegation of authority over the recorder's office, the sheriff's office, the treasurer's office, or the auditor's office. They are elected officials, and you said you didn't know that.
I...
So I understand...
I said, I knew they were all elected officials. I know that. I vote for them and stuff. I know that.
Right.
But the part I didn't understand and know and realize is that you had to tell all of them about this phone call, which I still didn't get and understand why you had to tell all of them about this phone call.
I'm going to... This will be the last thing I say about this, okay, Pauline? The fact that you assume that the elected officials here in Hardin County are acting in a malicious, illegal, unethical way, I believe that the elected officials need to know what your stance is on that. And when you call angry and upset and make allegations, I think they believe... I believe they need to understand what the root of the problem is.
I went to some of these elected officials.
Okay.
And I talked to them, and I asked them, because I was upset with this, and I asked them if you had talked with them about this. And there was only one that you had talked to.
Right.
None of the others you had even went and talked to about this.
Right, because...
So why did you threaten me with that threat?
I did not...
Saying that you were going to talk to all the elected officials?
Because, just like I spoke...
Because now I am angry and upset about that. But see, I'm not making a threat, am I?
No. All I said, Pauline, was that they deserve to know. Did I talk to them? No. I thought about it. What is the best decision? Much like we spoke, is sometimes we can be upset, we should sleep on things, we should think about them.
Okay. And you should... What you should do is make sure that people are informed that the meeting is canceled. The minute you decide to do that, get it up there on that thing. And this is not 1850. Everyone's going to go upstairs and look at that.
Okay.
What comes out on the supervisor's website should be dependable enough that that's the thing. No, you no longer have to walk up, walk, you know, upstairs, drive up here, and look to find out what's really going to happen. So then, it's your obligation to make sure that those cancellations are timely and as soon as they're decided.
Yep.
That's all we ask.
Okay.
Do your job. Thank you.
All right.
I have one thing.
Yes, Bob?
I was going to say this, but in watching this and not being part of it, just got upset, what I would suggest is, you say all this stuff is public record, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, take, not this situation, but something else. You're talking to somebody, but it doesn't seem right. I wouldn't think it's right to tell them, I'm going to talk to everybody. It's public record, right?
Correct.
So if you eliminate that part of the conversation, especially when somebody's upset, if you feel you need to show the other people, then I think that's what you should do, just like any other question. It could be about any situation.
Correct.
If somebody brings up something that seems a little questionable, it's probably not to argue with them over it, but talk to your other people. That will eliminate this problem, but...
Right. Yep.
That's all I wanted to say.
All right. Thank you, Bob. Any other public comment?
Yes.
I just...
Donna, go ahead.
She's not here, and I don't like to say anything personally about anybody. But I did want to... I think Jessica Larratt ought to be thanked.
I'm not just born.
No, that's what Jessica Larratt had to thank her for. Because her explanation of all that stuff, and I went home, listened to it twice, took notes, great, and I wanted to thank her for that.
Thank you. Okay.
I would like to ask one more thing. If we could have Megan come weekly and be on the agenda too, because I would like to know kind of what she's doing and what's going on with that department.
Okay.
If we could add her weekly on here to the agenda.
Any other public comment? All right. I'll go ahead and ask for approval of the minutes from the August 8, 2018 meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the August 8 minutes.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approval of claims for payment?
Move to approve the claims for payment.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I do have some discussion.
Oh, sorry.
Oh.
I don't know if we have claims this week. I don't remember them.
Did we approve the 8th? Because Mindy was...
I put that on in case something was...
No handwritten...
This week or next week.
Because Mindy presented the prior weeks, okay?
Okay.
There is no claims list this week. I just left it on in case something came before you today and you needed it, but you don't have to.
Okay, so there's nothing for next week either?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
But I'll leave it on just in case there's something that needs approved next week.
Okay.
So we can approve zero.
We spent zero this week, okay? Taylor, utility permits and secondary roads department report?
I know utility permits, but the Ackley Road should get done this week. We'll see how much this rain slows them down. I'm sure it'll make Angela pretty happy. We got our bridge done last Thursday. I said the road was going to close on the highway. They got it done. It was just afternoon, so it went pretty good. It was planned.
Good.
One was done Hall Rock coming here, too. So the plan, and we'll have bigger... We got our piles left, so they'll find some homes for it.
No requests for the piles or the homes?
Yeah, there's plenty of requests, yeah.
All right. The next item I have is a resolution for the termination of the 2080 agreement with Grundy County in regards to the Assistant Hardin County Attorney's Office.
I will make a motion to approve the resolution for the termination of the 2080 agreement in regard to the Assistant Hardin County Attorney.
Second.
Can I?
Yes. Go ahead, Pauline.
Can I ask what that is? I guess I don't understand.
Yeah, I was just going to explain that, too. It's a resolution... We previously approved a resolution for the hiring of Hieronymus Schmidt, Alan Schroeder, and Gier as Assistant County Attorneys when we were shorthanded in the County Attorney's Office, which they are attorneys out of Grundy County. So being as we've got a new county attorney and a new assistant, we no longer need their services.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Nancy?
Renee?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next I have is the 2,000 abate orders presented to us by the treasurer.
Move to approve the 2,017 abate orders as presented.
I'll second it.
Okay. I have a motion, a second. Any discussion?
I have...
Just one.
Yes, just one.
They're all the same.
All right.
This is for a property at DMB Edition, Block 8, the south 80 feet, the west 150 feet of Lot 2.
Okay.
In Radcliffe.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next I have is the county recorder's monthly report.
I will make a motion to approve the recorder's monthly report for the month of July.
I'll second that.
Okay. I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Lori, do you have anything to add? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Next I have is action on the pair of REAP Committee recommendations on grant applications.
I will make a motion to approve the committee's recommendations on the grant, REAP grant applications.
I'll second that.
Okay. I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Yes?
Wes?
Does that fall under what Megan?
No.
No.
This is different then.
Yep.
Wes, do you want to talk a little bit about these?
Yeah, basically, this came to us last week. It was an application from the City of Eldora and the City of Union, and they were going after REAP funds to have some trail work done on the Highway River Railroad Trail. The City of Union is asking for some gravel to be placed over top of the road, the railroad stone, so they can use it as a more user-friendly surface. And the City of Eldora is going after paving, and that's a thing behind IAB.
What is... Like, is that what used to be, the old railroad track?
Yes.
Is that what you're talking about?
Yes. So those are... We had a... We had a... The county has... There's a committee, REAP committee, and we have to review those, approve them, and send them on, and then they go to the state, and they compete against all the other cities in the state. And there's only so much money available, and then there's a review committee that scores them, looks at them, and they usually have a representative available to answer questions if they have questions that come up. And then they usually find out that afternoon where they fell in the ranking and gets awarded money or marginal money in the board, and I think there's... I'm not sure how much money is available this year for it.
How come Union's not going to pave it instead of gravel?
I'm not sure. You'll have to... The applications were prepared by Region 6 out of Marshalltown.
Julie Winters?
Winters. I'm not sure if they're ready to go forward with paving or what, but they wanted it just to be stolen first. You'll have to ask them that question. I just got the application, so I don't know the rhyme or reason for it.
Who would I ask, then, and you?
You could even talk to the mayor in Union, I think she... Cynthia or Julie Winters, Region 6. Cynthia and I?
Yep.
Yep.
The documents. Scans says those documents are online. Thank you.
All in favor of approving the REAP grant applications, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item I have is acknowledgement of a receipt of Union documents from the chauffeurs, teamsters, and helpers, Local Union Number 238.
I'll make a motion to announce your receipt of Union document.
I'll second it.
Okay. I think I would ask the supervisors to start thinking about who we would like to utilize for Union negotiations, whether you'd like to use the current Mike Galaway and Associates from Ayers and Cooney, or somebody else to negotiate or be a part of the Union negotiations going forward. So I know we're not going to take action on who's going to do that today, but just to start thinking about that so we can let the Union know that we're acknowledging this, and then we can give them a point of contact in the near future.
Okay.
All in favor of acknowledging the receipt of the Union documents, say aye.
Aye.
The next item I have is discussion with possible actions on the local option sales tax fund allocation resolution. We spoke about this last week, about how those local option sales tax dollars are spent, and we're given until today to determine if any changes to that distribution formula need to be evaluated, and so I'd like to discuss that at this point, get any input from my colleagues.
I think one of the... And I brought it up. I'm not the one that put it on the agenda last week, but it makes sense to me when you're taking, if we're at the 80%, that is a tax relief to the rural services, and some of the larger complaints I get from the rural areas are the fact that we need more gravel, or bridges, or get the bridges up, the roads. But if anything, I would like to allocate some of that money, instead of tax relief, it would go to roads, surface, road surfaces. I don't know what percent, if it was up to me, I would say as high as 50%, which gives about $350,000 to roads for either bridges, rock, pavements, being that specific.
Taking 50% of the 80?
Yes. That's an idea. And part of my idea behind that is that the state mandates how much we can charge, or how much we can tax the taxpayers to go to secondary roads. One-third of their budget comes from the county, two-thirds of their budget roughly comes from your sales tax, is that correct? Or fuel tax?
Road use tax.
Road use tax. There's no way we can get more money to secondary roads.
Right.
And rock seems to be an issue.
I would agree with that.
And bridges seem to be an issue. So that would be something I would intrigue on the idea.
So you don't think all of the whatever percentages decided to go to secondary roads, you don't want to leave some of... I mean, you still want to leave some for property tax relief? Or do you want it all to go to roads and bridges?
I would leave... Oh, I don't care. I just figured 50%. Then if something else came down the line, you still have 20% left for tax relief, and you're not putting that high of a jump on the taxpayers on next year's taxes if it does get passed. I'm fine with the capital projects at 10% and the economic development at 10%. I'm fine with that. But then again, I was the one that put those two there, or one of the ones that put those I just feel...
And I can see taking possibly another 5% and splitting it between capital improvements and economic development myself. Capital improvements, we've got a lot of things while we're currently looking into the HVAC system. We've got upgrades, updates, maintenance, whatever to do in the courtroom, in the second floor. That's going to be very costly. So I can... And the jail is now 20 years old. We're working on doors on that. Just the older things get, the more maintenance there is. Capital improvements, I don't know if that's something that could also be used for, possibly go towards the new shop for combining secondary road locations?
And I acknowledge that we need all those things. My question I have is, by taking away from tax relief of just the rural services people, I would rather budgets... It's a county jail. It's a county courthouse. Why are the rural services the ones taking the burden away instead of the entire county? That would be my question.
Well, we're also limited in what we can spend out of the general fund. I mean, the state puts the limits on it. I guess otherwise, it's bond issues, and a bond issue may not pass, but the maintenance or upkeep still needs to be done.
Right.
It's a little more of a guarantee of a little bit more funds.
Budgeting and bonding, I guess, are the two factors I would try to use for that, either budget for projects or bond for the projects, instead of just build a slush fund and then... And I call it a slush fund because lost money gets to build up and stay and keep rolling over instead of going back into the budget. Or if we knew we had a project, we could go ahead and...
Start saving towards it. I mean, I'm not going to argue so much on the capital improvements, but I would like to see an additional 2% or 3% go to economic development.
And I got the same scenario on that. It's, you're taking away from the rural services tax relief for economic development for the entire county. It's the same statement.
But also that economic development money can be used for developments in rural areas also.
Correct.
We do have...
And everybody benefits from it.
Yeah. And we do have, you know, a couple of... Do have some improvements, new businesses, industry, whatever, in the rural area.
And when we did this, when we did this four years ago, creating 10% is roughly $65,000 a year for economic development that the rural people are... Took away from their tax relief to contribute to economic development. Could the rest come from general fund again? I support both, everything you're saying. I just don't know if I support it against our lost funds for tax relief.
Our general fund is already at the max. I mean, we don't really have any more leeway in the general fund. in the general fund.
But we could go in debt services, we could find money elsewhere too.
So is Renee saying we can use some of this money then to get our jail up, back up to code, or?
That would be the capital improvements.
She, she was using that as an example.
That would be under capital improvements.
The, the jail brings a revenue in, that also can be spent on the improvements there, but she was using that as an example, not, not just this is what we're going to use it for. An example is in the courthouse itself, HVAC system. Maybe remodeling this room. It's, what would you spend the money on?
Okay, so does our courtroom need a few updates then?
That is a tough question that's been asked for years, yes and no. It's old, the acoustics are terrible up there, the cer, the air circulation is terrible up there. Yes, they could use it, but are we going to dump a bunch of money into something that could eventually be closed?
Why, why would it close?
They, the state has pulled that on us last year again, that they might close some courthouses.
Or, or combine some court offices, so we might not even have court here, might be in another county.
They guarantee us it won't happen, but then they talk about it again.
Right.
But I mean, if we have the detention center here and we have the boys home here-
We're not the ones that make that decision.
Right, that's-
And, and I mean, we have a large jail here where-
I agree with you 100% on all those.
Yep, I do too, but there's no guarantee.
So wouldn't that-
It would be a lot more transporting those, those prisoners or whatever to court services in possibly Grundy County or Webster County, we wouldn't, we wouldn't know.
It would not be beneficial to anyone in the state to do this.
So that's why I'm not arguing.
If that's what they do, that's what we have to abide by.
That's why I'm not really arguing for the capital improvements increase. I'm more concerned on economic development. With a possible rail project we're looking at, or that the economic development committees are looking at in Iowa Falls, and also, we're wanting more out of our two economic development individuals that are hired by Ackley and also by Iowa Falls, we would like to have more use of those people for the other towns in the county and various projects.
When we talked the other day, I don't think they need any more money whatsoever. I think they get plenty of money already.
I'm, I'm not, yeah, and I don't necessarily mean just towards their salaries. I know there's a, there's a program out there, it's called the Find Program, which is finding dentists for rural areas. We have two people in the county that have currently, that are currently looking for that. It's a way to get dentists that are like newly graduated to come to smaller communities, get them established in the community, get their businesses established, or they're, like, we have one at Anderson Family Dentistry that's gone in there, she's hired him, but he has, they can have up to, you know, around $100,000 in college loans that can be partially, I'm not exactly sure how it's all done, but it can be partially either, not really wiped off, but help being repaid. If they can get a $5,000 grant for, out of the community or out of economic development, whomever, then part of their college loan will be repaid by the business or from some fund. I'm not exactly sure of all the specifics, but in order for, and Hanson Family Hospitals looking for, for doctors, if there's a way that economic development could help fund those type of things, I'm not talking about paying their salary or anything like this, maybe give 500 or $1,000 to this fine, to these two dentists that are wanting to move and live in our communities and provide services, that's one, that's just a couple of the instances where that money could be used.
Which benefits everybody.
Right.
Rural area.
And if you read today's Times Citizen, Hanson Family Hospital is going internationally to get nurses to work in the hospital in Iowa Falls, so, I mean, the, the basic services, getting those back in the community, such as the laundromats, such as doctors, such as nurses, dentists, are, are very important to keep, you know, small towns viable.
And we, it's hard for small rural communities to compete with the Des Moines, the Cedar Rapids, Iowa City, those types of places when it comes to salary, but we think if we can get them here, they'll learn what it's like and the freedoms and the whatever we have in small communities, that they would, that we would hope they would remain here and, and stay and work in these smaller communities.
Well, I mean, let's, let's be honest, we, we have gotten, most of us established when Eldora Hospital closed, most of us got established with going probably south to Ames or to Marshalltown. So I mean, we're not going to use that facility anyway. And from what I know of it, I wouldn't take my dog there.
Well, that's personal, those are personal opinions, I am not going to-
You know, this direction here is not going to support.
So do you want to start going to-
Iowa Falls.
Waterloo, Ames, Des Moines for chiropractor appointments, your dental appointments, your eye appointments?
Pauline again, that was, that was an, that was an, Pauline, that was an example, not what it was being used for.
Right.
You're, we're getting too involved into what an example was versus the discussion of this.
Right.
Well, what I'm saying is-
Local option sales tax.
Well, we kind of got, this part is established, so are we putting all the money into just part of northern part?
No.
It's not saying where the, it's not saying where the money is going.
No.
She also used the example here in Eldora.
We have-
For a dentist.
We have three dentists here in Eldora, don't we? Don't we have Dr. Stickrod and, and we've got two at Anderson?
One of the two was her example, one of the two was her example.
One of the two at Anderson's is one of my examples.
Yes, Julie.
Okay, whatever happens, taxes have been cut at the state level, and so that does trickle down, so there are more local taxes being paid. So no matter what, there's going to be tax increase somewhere to fix something. So, I think that we should make sure this tax is spent on things that need to be fixed. When you talk about looking internationally for, for interests to come from what, you know, in, like, the medical field, you, that's not going to, that at this point is not a good investment, because if that immigrant comes, those tax incentives can be held against them and a way to actually remove their legal status and deport them. So that's not, at this point, until that's changed, we probably don't want to be looking at that, because that's, that's a thing now.
Aren't they a US government?
On the federal level, that's how, that's-
The country that he was talking about is a US?
No, Philippines, but, yeah.
Yes, and that's what I'm saying. I mean, you have to be careful, but any hospitals are either facing or escaping doctors.
But economic, economic development is just not the medical field.
No.
I understand that. I understand, I know that.
But the examples were medical fields.
The money that we have now, you know what, maybe they should have taxed more and not cut taxes at the state level, and you wouldn't have to be doing this, you know, now, so, you know what, it just means that it comes down to local people. We may have to pay more taxes because of what's going on at the state level. I think we should just say, just take this money, make sure it's spent on concrete things that we need infrastructure stuff. It'll, um, sometimes economic development, I know this is, you know, we're glad that there's economic development, but we also need to have it be a place where people want to make clean water, make clean things.
Okay.
Your thoughts?
I'd like to keep the rural money in the rural areas, so the, Lance's thought of maintaining the percentage and, you know, utilizing the, you know, 50%, what he proposed for infrastructure, I think that's a great start. Taylor's never going to turn down a load of rock, and I don't think anybody in our rural communities are going to turn down improvements to their surfaces either. So, I see the importance there, I believe the capital projects, everything is aging, and so, I think making sure we have a clear vision of knowing what is aging and having a plan for those, there's more rainy days than there are, you know, beautiful sunshine days in government, so I think that number could stay the same, but just have a vision and an intended purpose for those funds. Economic development, I believe we can do better. Last year, we utilized some of those funds for the creative placemaking efforts, which I think brought a lot of insight to many communities. Any community that wanted to be a part of it could be a part of it. A handful didn't want to, but the communities that did take part in the discussions throughout the course found some true goals and objectives that they could work towards in individual communities. So I think that's one of the examples of good investment of those economic development dollars from the lost funds. But knowing that Angela is the third economic development director from the Ackley Development Corporation in the last couple of years, and having Cindy Litwiler moved on and a new person coming in, we need to look at what it's going to take to recruit and retain the leaders of our economic development efforts. So, I believe that we can find a happy medium between the lost funds and looking at our budgeting, when it comes to budgeting, to bring the funds together to have a good balance that serves the lost funds that come from the rural areas into economic development. So, I would suggest that we, as a board, look at the budgeting process, and I know we're meeting with the two economic development corporations or councils in the near future, is to find out what their expectations and what their vision looks like, so we know what needs to be budgeted towards that and give us a little more foresight, so.
Are these people even qualified?
Angela, are you, what's that?
Are these people even qualified to know how to hire doctors or nurses in rural areas?
Angela, what are, what's your experience?
I actually have a master degree specializing healthcare administration, so I'm good.
All right. Yes, Julie?
Oh, since we're talking about economic development and you mentioned the railroad, was that freedom of information request ever sent out by the county attorney? Was that request ever fulfilled?
I'm not sure.
We know that he had the documents, as she said. Have they ever been sent? If, yeah, I'd like to see that. What, do I need to go ask him? How does that work?
You're more than welcome to ask Attorney Meyer.
Maybe you should do that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, so sometimes people need to know what the economic development thing is, even, you know, I understand, I understand non-disclosure stuff.
Okay.
But when it's all over, I expect-
I don't believe it's all over.
Well, that non-disclosure, we need to have, I want to see the documents, because that, at the end of that time, they should have been released. That was the thing. Thank you.
Yep.
So can we sit in, and the general public sit in on this economic development?
Absolutely.
Stuff, so we can learn more about this?
Yep.
Because maybe I'm going at this the wrong way, because I don't know if they allow this.
The Iowa Falls Development Group meets, I believe, the third Wednesday of the month at 11:30 in Iowa Falls, and the Ackley Development Group meets, is it?
First Thursday, 7:00 AM.
First Thursday at 7:00 AM.
I don't believe Iowa Falls is an open door meeting.
Yeah.
I know, I didn't work at ours.
Okay.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that again?
Iowa Falls Development Corporation meets the third Wednesday of the month at 11:00 AM.
And that's at where?
Is it Iowa Falls?
Iowa Falls State Bank.
Iowa Falls State Bank.
And I agree, I don't know that they're open to the public.
Pauline, I would call ahead of time. I don't believe it's an open door meeting. They don't fall under the same stipulations we call under.
They're not a government-type entity.
And Angela gets-
So how do we find out then, or how do we know what this is all about, the general public, if it's not open?
If it's a meeting, if it's a meeting, if it's a meeting with the supervisors, it's open. It's an open door meeting, unless for some reason it can go into closed door, then we'd have to obviously ask you to leave.
So, why does it fall under closed doors?
There's certain requirements that put us in a closed door situation.
Iowa Code Chapter 21, subsection 3.
And it has to meet those requirements. If it doesn't meet those, it's an open door.
There's also code chapters that refer to economic development, I mean, that would be another resource, I suppose, and-
And Ackley was the first Thursday of the month, first 7:00 AM. We have about five minutes left. More than walking in. Where's that at? Right through the Maryville. Right, right through Maryville.
The old circle eight?
Here. Yep. And that's only for five minutes?
We have, I mean, we need several hours, but very little of it is open. Because so much of economic development is confidential, we might have 10 or 15 projects going at once, but only about two come in rotation, only about one is not knocked down. So I know you probably think we don't do a lot, but we do a lot, and talk different things and we do get done. And those meetings are hard to share before it gets too long.
So once again, my question is, how does the public, if they're all confidential and we're asking about this money going to you, then I don't feel comfortable as a citizen saying, why do we give money to the economic development when we don't, when we can't sit in on a meeting and know what it's going to, when there's already, what I feel, quite a few dollars going to you? Why do I want any more dollars going to you if I don't know what my dollars are doing? I can't come in and sit in on your meetings to know what you're doing. You're recruiting doctors and nurses, and I understand-
They don't fall under the same Open Meetings Act that the county does.
It seems like nothing falls under the same open meetings in this county. Nothing does. You can't find out nothing in this county in a meeting.
I think, it's not just this county, it's, it's all counties, are that, I mean, we fought, we all, all the counties and all the organizations fall under the same laws.
It seems like all counties are- It seems like Iowa County is a heck of a lot different. And they're a heck of a lot bigger county than what Harden County is, and they're a lot more open than what this is.
So...
I don't understand, but I'm going to voice my opinion. As from what I know, since all of economic is closed doors, I don't want any of my dollars going to economic development.
Got that, Rob? You've got that. Okay.
So do we do anything?
I'd, I'd like to maintain the current percentages, but to line item a portion of the 80% to surfaces and infrastructure.
Is that the words we need to be using?
Yeah, because, I mean, you cannot pay our salaries, I would definitely specify what it is for.
I think we need to look up the code section as far as, and maybe talk to the county attorney. This has to be, do you remember the date, Nancy? Is it the 28th or the? So we still have another week or so that we can...
Get the exact verbiage, Taylor?
Yeah.
Because technically, I cannot utilize the funds, only you. You know, like that means that you guys buy a load of rocks, say, "Hey, Taylor, there's a load of rocks, have you guys haul it." You know, something like that.
Yeah, I think we need to talk with the county attorney within the next week and have something next week.
Verbiage.
Right, right.
Otherwise, right currently, we're agreeing that you want to put 50%, leave the other two at 10? So it'd be 50...
I'm not gonna argue anymore.
50, 30, 10, 10?
Correct.
And have the county attorney address it, the verbiage that we wanted?
Yeah.
What is, what is our intention, so he gets the right verbiage?
Yep.
Was that 50% of?
Eighty.
Eighty, or 50, 30, 10?
No, it's 50, 30, 10, and 10. It's 50% of lost funds will go to roads. 30% will still stay as a tax relief, 10 to capital and 10 to economic development. And currently, it's 80, 10, and 10. So if it doesn't pass, it'll stay 80, 10, and 10.
Say that again.
If it, if it doesn't pass, it'll stay the same.
Okay, and if it does, how, how are you doing it then?
50, 30, 10, 10.
But the, the deal with, um, why there's so much, um, use and constant repair to the roads is because of all the hogs that are here. Perhaps hogs per head should be taxed to cover some of those, um, some of that road maintenance, because it's so hard.
Everyone can complain about that.
I would...
Thank you, I just wanna get that out there. Maybe hogs should be taxed per head to cover some of the damage that he is constantly fixing.
I agree with you, Julie. I think they should be, their value should be increased on the amount of tax they pay on. I do agree. Okay.
So the 50, 30, 10, and 10. So what, the, the 30, 10, and 10 will save 30% tax relief, 10% economic. Keep the same verbiage on those two. Economic development and 10% capital projects. Our intent of the 50 is for surfaces.
Yep.
Roads, bridges, rock, whatever needs to be, yep. So whatever...
So just target surface?
Yeah.
And then have him clarify what surface is? Which, meaning bridges, which is a surface, correct?
I'd probably use the word bridge.
Okay, so make sure we have bridges in there.
Keep it out of the ditch, try to specify just the roadway.
Rid, the roadway?
Yeah, you could probably use that.
Just roadways.
Okay. So bridges, rock, paving.
Or even roadways would cover rock and...
Yeah.
Yeah, just want to make sure roadway's covers those three things. As he, he, he needs direction. I just want to give the direction clarified here while we're together.
There's other counties that have done it, so I'm sure you can find what they did.
Right. Yeah, there are other counties that have it that way.
All right. Anything else on that topic, Lance?
Do we need to make the motion to direct Daryl to come back with us, with these percentages? To be put on next week's agenda?
I think if somebody just talks to Daryl and tells him what we've kind of talked about, decided on, and then we can just act on...
Okay.
Do you want to contact Daryl, Lance?
I can.
Okay.
So I think, at this point, I don't, I don't think so. My, I don't think. Anyway, you do what you want.
Okay. All right, the next item I have is a change of status in environmental health.
I will make a motion to approve the employee change of status for Micah Cutler. This will be a pay increase of $4,000 annually. We, when the environmental health, um, department employee was hired, she was put under Micah's, uh, department as a department head. And my thing, and Micah's never been compensated for that, taking over that responsibility. And this would be a pay increase, um, for, for that service, extra service she's providing.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion of second.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, effective July 1st.
Micah, do you have anything?
Okay. We, we talked about this during the budget time and had her bring something to us. So this also ties itself, so if Sanitarium ever pulls away, this pulls away as well, correct? So this is only if Sanitarium becomes its own department, which could happen, I don't know. This will pull away from the salary as well.
Right.
I believe it's a little higher than I'd choose, but, for a number, but it's not much higher than I would choose.
My thought is, Micah needs to know a lot of the requirements and those types of things too, to make sure that Jess is doing her job. And not only is Jess doing that, she's also now taken on zoning, which is also kind of a responsibility for Micah, so to an extent.
She's also the fill-in person when Jess is gone.
Correct.
When we do have meetings, you're here instead of Jess in some cases. Now Jess does a better job at it, sorry. But a lot of this is a, a learning curve for the full-time position.
Correct.
And it's taking on a lot of extra duties as well.
Right.
Okay. All in favor of the change of status, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next I have is two business associate agreements relating to Central Iowa Community Services. Lynn is here. Do you have anything to add for these items, Lynn?
No, these are, this was recommended by our regional CICS governing board that each county would sign these agreements. Basically, it's just an agreement that says, because, for example, with Iowa County Technology, we use statewide system called CSM. And it's basically just assuring them, we will follow practices that comply with HIPAA so that we don't get ISAC in trouble. And then the same thing with CICS, um, is that where each county is doing workforce CICS. And just basically, again, saying that we're fully compliant with HIPAA. Micah's our security officer for the county, and so she's reviewed it too.
Right, and this is kind of standard stuff. We have vendors that we work with sign business associate agreements, saying basically the same thing. We're letting you on our system, or you're working with our data, and we expect you to follow our HIPAA policies and be compliant. And so this is, in this case, we're kind of acting as the vendor for this, the region, and we're just saying, yeah, we're gonna follow standard HIPAA rules.
Okay. So the first item would be the business associate agreement with Iowa County's Technology Service.
I will make a motion to approve the business associate agreement with the Iowa Technology Services.
Second.
Iowa County's Technology Services.
I have a motion of second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The next is a business associate agreement with CICS, Central Iowa Community Services.
I will make a motion to approve the business associate agreement with CICS.
Second.
I have a motion of second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. With that, other business, Lance, Renee? Okay, I did receive a letter this morning from Orion Group. It's a technology company that Becky Rose had asked for a letter of support from the Harden County Board of Supervisors to, uh, help with the new signage at the CCC POW Recall Military Museum. And they were awarded the full amount of $500 towards the purchase of signs. So, um, congratulations to the CCC and POW Museum, so... Anything else? Jessica Sheridan?
I just wanted to provide a brief explanation of last Wednesday's meeting documents that I wasn't here for.
Okay.
All right, so again, I wasn't here last week, but I was informed that there was some confusion about my recommendation letter to you guys for the Mytown Finisher Farm Site, which isn't a legal document. It's only meant as an explanation for you guys, so you aren't making a recommendation on that.
Right.
It's just an explanation of the process. I mean, everything I give to anybody is legal and that is publicly available, but nothing else, I would say. But anyway, so there was confusion between the difference between that and the application that was submitted for the expansion of the Home Finisher Farm Site. Oh, one, I have to... Oh, never mind, I don't have to. Okay. So the discrepancy between the numbers can be explained as an effort for transparency, but it may have caused confusion, which apparently was not the right thing to do in this circumstance. So as you can, well, you can't see it on the application, but on the application, the new animal unit number is listed as 1,176 after expansion. But there's a note next to the table on the application that says, if the animal unit capacity in column A is 500 animal units or less, which it is, it's 180, I believe, then you enter the total proposed animal unit capacity in the new animal unit column. So, since the existing was less than 500, you don't include that in the total, based on that bill on the table. In my letter, I listed that the new animal unit capacity was 1,356 animal units. I did that in an effort for transparency, that there would in fact be 1,356 animal units, not 1,176, which wasn't going off of the application, it was just simply trying to be open enough and say, this is actually how many animal units are going to be there. So 180 plus 1,176 equals 1,356. If there was a mistake in my letter, it was that I didn't specify why that number was different from the application, which I apologize, but it seemed to have caused quite a bit of confusion. I felt that the reason for the difference was clear. I apologize for not including the reasoning for that, especially because you guys had the vow for me in my absence. But again, they make their recommenda, the supervisors make their recommendation based on the information provided at the public hearing and that included in the application. My recommendation letter is an explanation of the process that was taken for analyzing the application. Really nothing else.
Right.
Okay.
So...
Yes, Julie?
Okay, so there's 450 hogs there now, and they will be adding, how many hogs?
They will be adding... Well, I don't have it on the top of my head.
2,490, I think?
2,490.
So that equals, how many hogs?
3,390, I think.
2,490 plus 450. Right, 450, adding 2,490, totals 2,940. Animal units, 180, 996, total animal units, 1,176. I mean, it's... That's according to the...
Okay, well, we can pull up the application again, I still think I'm right, but...
But except, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I see.
All right, thank you, Jessica.
If you look at the application, which actually could be brought up right now, but that's okay. But it was an application for 2,490 additional. We're talking head, not animal units. And then there's already 450, so add it, no, that's, you know, it's just, because I was confused about that total, that's all, that's all I'm saying. It was not, you know, I don't think anything fishy or anything like that. I just like to have things at, you know, that's all. I, yeah, I didn't understand the real total number of heads.
Well, if you're gonna take it up, if you want to take it up after the meeting, that'd be fine. Okay?
Because down here at the bottom, where it's number of head, 450, animal units, 180, isn't... You don't add those together, do you? I mean, isn't 450, does that equal 180 animal units? 180 units?
Right.
Are they, are they adding those?
No.
No. No. I didn't, no, that's what they're doing? Okay. Yeah, they figured it out afterwards.
Okay.
I don't know, I guess the recommendations already been made, and this is not a legal document, so...
Right.
It is on record, though. I re, I request that anything that goes on record, and it wasn't included with that, I just request things that are on record, public documents reflect accuracy, you know, that's, that's all. Just to make sure that the math, you know, it's not, it, we shouldn't be having this discussion, but unfortunately.
So then you're saying that maybe we just go by the application, and she doesn't even write up a letter of recommendation?
I'm not saying that, absolutely not.
Well, I, I think maybe that's what needs to happen then, from here forward, we just go by the application.
We need to have accurate documents, that's all I ask.
And accurate correction?
Yeah, I'm not saying that she did this on purpose.
I don't know that there's a correction that needs to be made.
Look at the application, see how many hogs the application talks about.
450, and then they're adding 2,490.
Okay, then add those two numbers together.
Right.
Anything else? Okay, hearing none, I'll ask for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.